Okay, we'll call it to all of this, August the 14th, 2019 meeting, the Franklin County Commission. Roll call.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
President.
Commissioner Dunn.
President.
Commissioner Stottlemyre.
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson.
President.
Sheriff Howard.
President.
Okay, if you'd all stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, please remain standing for the invocation will be led by Pastor Mark Hutton of the Westminster Presbyterian Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Let us pray. Divine and loving Creator, we give you thanks for the fact that we woke up this morning and we drew a breath, a breath that reminds us that you breathed life into us and you have given us this day. God, we give you thanks for this opportunity to serve you and the various ways that you call us to serve you. We pray that you will guide us with wisdom, with enthusiasm, with enlightenment, and with energy. God, you are a God of abundance, and this year your abundance has been certainly through rain, which has brought its challenges, which has brought some troubles here in this county. So God, as our commissioners strive to serve the people of this county, may you grant them that wisdom. May you grant them cohesiveness, a unity to serve the people. God, I give you thanks for their willingness to be here and to serve the people and to serve our county and to serve you. God, we give you thanks and praise in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, Texas correspondent organizational business, we have none today. Will anybody sign a public comment?
Yes, we have James Wallace, who is first, and Norman Woogie.
Okay, a citizen desiring to speak on item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes and the commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion shall be limited to matters of county commission business and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or on pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date. Mr. Wallace?
I'm just here today to ask some questions about the Planning Commission, if the procedures have changed as far as people dropping off the board and adding new people to the board. I didn't see it advertised or mentioned in the paper or anywhere, and I wondered if they still interview for open positions at the Planning Commission. If I have any remaining time, I'd like to donate it to the.
We don't do that.
Norman Woogie, 3790 Pawnee Road, Ottawa, Kansas. There was an air accident on Tennessee and Spring Creek Road, about four inches of water on the bridge, car in front of me hit it, and not good. We need to get that fixed sometime, and it's pretty good at getting chuckles. It's been about the same old thing for 25 years, or 30, I guess. Franklin County has some grave problems. You, as the commissioners, can't see the problems with the roads and the bridges? You don't want to be bothered with trying to fix a problem? Spend money elsewhere? You say talk to the department heads. They mostly want to take care of their people and keep them happy. Do you guys want to service? Hire some people that really want for us to have safe roads. Moreover, return the calls when you get called at home. I have here more than one complaint on that. There needs to be a reorganization of the road and bridge department, professional time study on each employee, cross-training, able to respond to additional meetings. Don't fold under pressure of remarks like, "You're micro managing." At least do some managing. The proof is in the pudding. We need to have big changes, not a bunch of excuses. Thank you.
Texas Consent Agenda. Items today that need considered and approved on the consent agenda are meeting minutes for the regular meeting, eight, seven, and 19, the minutes from the budget hearing on eight, seven, and 19, tax change orders in the amount of a minus $2,459.82, and one emergency vehicle permit. Look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I would move to approve this consent agenda.
Motion for a second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Sheriff Howard?
Yes.
Okay, takes us to items of business. Our first item of business today to consider and approve the recommendation for three new board members of the Ransom Memorial Board of Trustees. Okay, let me get, find this. Currently, there's three board members that have served their four-year terms that will be going off, and that is Diane Drake, Wayne Duderstadt, and Phil Gibson. Want to publicly thank them for their years of service. I know it takes a lot of their time to do that, and appreciate that the four years they each put in. The three that are recommended to replace them is Betty Berzer, Eric Duderstadt, and Crystal Anderson. Would look for a motion to approve those three.
Rick, there's nobody here I can ask questions. I've got a whole list of questions on this topic, but I don't have anybody, and I'm not going to throw it on Mr. Waymeyer, because he, I mean, because he didn't run the ad, he didn't review the applications, I'm guessing, so I can't, I'm not going to throw that on him. And I've got a whole list of questions, and there's nobody here to ask those questions. But I'd like to know who run the ad. I'd like to know how many, I'll just say them, how many applications did you get? I want to know who reviewed the application. I want to know who's on the board now. And, I mean, we're entrusting this board to spend a million dollars worth of tax dollars money, and at least I could, we could get a few simple answers, you know, to the point. And I realize I haven't been in this process for four years, maybe it's changed, I don't know. But I think we at least ought to know how many applications they had, who did the reviews, who made the recommendation on the three, was it, who did make the recommendation of the three?
Let's table this.
I would table it, yeah.
We'll table this and we'll let Derek get ahold of some.
I don't mean to be.
That's fine, that's fine.
Critical, but I'd kind of like to know those answers.
So we'll table this and we'll let Derek get ahold of someone from the hospital to next meeting to be here to answer those questions.
This, of course, is the, I don't know, just any broad questions. The hospital essentially has two boards now that the Adventist Health is running the operations. They have a local board for the hospital, and that'd be the operations, the day-to-day business. This board is the one that formerly did run the operations of the hospital, but now that it's leased to Adventists, their main deal would be taking the sales tax, they oversee, then it gets used for either capital expenses on the facility, which the county still owns, or indigent care, things like that. We ran the ad. I'm not on that board, as you know, I go to their meetings, but they would have been ones that reviewed it and made a recommendation, but.
Who made it? Who reviewed it?
It would have been the hospital staff, is my understanding, but.
That's, you know.
Sure, I understand your.
That's not a problem.
They reviewing it, but they don't.
No, it's not a problem at all, I'm not trying to push it to.
I know, they reviewing, but they don't have the control of the spending of the money.
Sure, and I don't have to answer all your questions, so I.
And I'm not doing to be.
I understand, I just, no, I don't.
That's fine, that's not an issue, the table, it's not a problem, so.
Yep, I just clarify kind of what we're talking about, though.
Right, right.
And I wouldn't just want, or a moderator, I would like to see somebody, whoever did the application and who interviewed the applicants and who made the recommendation to us.
Derek can get them here next week, so.
Okay.
All right, we'll go on to item number two. Consider the approval of a resolution to install stop signs on northbound and southbound Utah Road at the intersection of Utah Road and Sand Creek Road. David?
Commissioners, a few weeks ago, was approached by a couple of different folks that live in that general vicinity, asking us to take a look at that intersection. There's quite a bit of traffic that flows through that area, there's some residences, several of them on the north side of that intersection. Currently, with the way that the land is utilized, it creates a sight distance issue in all four directions. You essentially have to do it safely, you really need to come to a complete stop and kind of ease out and look down the road in each direction to know whether or not it's safe to travel through there. I went out a couple of different times to drive that intersection from all the different directions and again, visited with those that came and talked to me about it. I think it warrants a couple of stop signs on Utah on either side of that intersection to, generally, that traffic is going to be driving a little bit slower, makes sense for them to come to a complete stop, will allow Sand Creek to flow through so that traffic isn't interrupted, but I think that that does warrant some sort of traffic control, and I think stop signs are appropriate at this location.
Did you consider a four-way stop there?
I did. The way that the manual of uniform traffic control, the way that that explains it, that is a, you need to use those sparingly. I believe that stopping the traffic on Utah will create a much safer situation. We're really charged with not inhibiting traffic flow and creating additional signage typically does that. If that were a, if, I guess, more heavily traveled road, I might consider that, but I think that at this time, just two stop signs will vastly improve the situation, and we'll continue to monitor it, and if things don't improve in the area, we'll come back to you with another resolution adding stop signs on Sand Creek. We don't have too many four-way stops in the county.
Do you then flag, oh, do you then flag it to let people know if it's a new?
What we'll do is, we'll have the stop signs at the corners, and in backways, we will have a stop sign ahead situation on Sand Creek. On the west side of that intersection, there's a hill, I intend to put another sign that indicates an intersection is ahead, just to give folks a little bit more warning. So we'll add some additional signage out there besides the stop signs, things that don't require a resolution to, again, make that a safer situation for everybody.
Would you do a traffic count on, would you do a traffic count on this, on both?
We, it wouldn't hurt, and quite frankly, I intended to do a lot of traffic counts this year, but with the other work that we've got going on, adding something like that on top of it just didn't seem prudent. I'd like to keep our folks working on our road conditions rather than, you know, monitoring and placing those traffic counters out.
It's clear, too, where your main traffic flow is and where visibility is and isn't, so.
Yeah, and again, I'm pretty confident that we're doing the right thing here. That's not to say that we shouldn't do traffic counts at some point to have a better idea.
I'll agree with you on putting the stop signs on Utah. I think that'd be a good help for safety out there.
I hope so. I hope that it creates a safer situation for all the folks that live and travel through that area.
Questions on this? If not, I would look for a motion for approval of Resolution Number 1921 to install stop signs on northbound and southbound Utah Road at the intersection of Utah Road and Sand Creek Road.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second it.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Sheriff Howard?
Yes.
Okay, takes us to item number three. Consider awarding the financing of the 2019 120-14 AWD motor grader to First Bank in the amount of $167,337.44.
Commissioners, as you know, we made arrangements to purchase a new motor grader. This puts in place the financing for the motor grader. It's over a five-year period. We will make four payments starting next year. We sent this out to all of the local banks, and we had six responses, so we received six bids. I placed the bid sheet in your packet, so you have access to all of those. First Bank of Sterling, Kansas actually came in with a low bid. Their interest rate was 2.52 percent. The next closest was 2.75 by Kansas State Bank, so we save a little bit in interest cost over the term of that loan. So the lowest and best bid is by the First Bank of Sterling for a grand total of $167,337.44 over the term of that note.
Have you had any business with this bank before?
Yes, they have had financing for our motor graders in the past. I think they, the last few have gone out to local institutions, but we do have history with them. I was surprised to see them myself, but talking with staff and looking back at the records, they indeed have been a player for us and been somebody that we've done business with.
We all know that we like to stay local if we can, but when we put bids out, we can save money on someone, especially someone that has done business with us before, then that's doing what we can to.
We personally contacted all the local banks. I don't know that we asked how this particular bank found out about it, but they did and submitted, you know, a nice bid for us.
Questions on this, any comments on this? Okay, if not, we'll look for a motion to award the financing of the 2019 120-14 AWD motor grader to First Bank of Sterling in the amount of $167,337.44.
Motion to approve?
Motion in a second.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Sheriff Howard?
Yes.
Okay, that's all we have listed for items of business today, so it takes us to staff reports. Sheriff, looks like you can start out.
Lane had their city council meeting. There were 30 members of the public that were present for that meeting, so they're still pretty engaged down there, and they talked about some sidewalks and some road stuff that they have going on, a little bit more about their park. The big thing they did was that they approved their budget, and they did keep their mill flat, so I'm just wanting to pass that on. Not this Saturday, but the following Saturday, on the 24th, there's a, we're having, the Sheriff's Foundation is sponsoring a competition fundraiser shooting down at Extreme Defense Options down by Richmond, in between Richmond and Lane there, and that's a fundraiser for the foundation, which supports K-9 program and scholarships and a few other things around our office to help support us, and so we're looking forward to that event happening as well. We're still plugging away, we're pretty busy. Our staffing feels worse than it is because we don't have everybody through the academy yet, and the last word that I got, the next available class that they, they're filling up, so our next available class isn't going to be till December, even though they're having them every three weeks. So it's not something that just affects us, it's all across the state that agencies are filling that, so hopefully the things are going to be getting worked out there and we'll be able to get that stuff accomplished, so.
The sheriff, speaking of K-9, the sheriff and I was talking the other day, he did advise me that one of his, the sheriff's K-9 units was able to make an apprehension on a subject that was wanted out of another state, and the K-9 was able to catch him, that they kept it around, so it's good to hear that they're out there doing what they're supposed to be doing.
They are, and they stay pretty busy, because again, we have more dogs than most of the agencies around us, so we do assist quite a bit as well, so. Other than that, if you guys have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
It looked like a pretty good wreck downtown this morning.
There was.
Can you tell us anything about that?
The two big things I can tell you was in the city, so they took the primary on all of that, and there were no serious injuries, so. The Main Street got opened up, well, just right before our meeting started here, it got opened back up finally, so. We've had a lot of crashes lately that, for whatever reason, and with school getting ready to start, people need to be really aware of all of that. You're going to have extra drivers on the road that don't have as much experience driving as they're driving to and from school now, and so, and extra traffic, so people need to drive with good caution. And also, I believe, Sheriff Howard, I'll be taking care of COFO tomorrow morning, so I know that you like to be off the hook, so.
I will definitely get up and listen to you.
Oh, well, that wasn't what I was after.
I don't really have much for you this morning, Commissioner, but I do want to let you know that I have touched base with the Richmond mayor, and so we've got a game plan moving forward on the connecting link through town. We still plan to meet face-to-face with him to talk about some larger issues, but we'll get that taken care of here in the coming weeks. Right now, it's all about working through the 1,700 work orders that we've got on the books and FEMA documentation. That's where I've been spending the vast majority of my time, and really to see that and see the amount of work that has gone on and the magnitude of the areas that were impacted by this year's floods. There's not an area of the county that hadn't been affected. We know this, but to see it on a map and to see the list is quite impressive, so. Anyway, that's how we're spending our time.
Are we still able to make our own signs out here at the road and bridge?
Yes, sir, we do make our own signs.
While we're talking about that, before I forget it, Williamsburg talked about replacing some of their signs, their last meeting that were wore out, and one thing that came up, are they able to purchase stop signs from the county?
I don't know that we've ever done that. I'll have to check with staff to see kind of what we have historically done. I'm not sure that.
I'm not sure the number we're talking about, it was just, I brought up and some, I said something about the county makes their own signs, as far as I know, and they asked if I would find out if they could possibly purchase some from us.
Yeah, I can definitely look into it.
Okay, thanks. Deb, go ahead.
Okay, takes us to Commissioner Comments and Board Reports. Iain, you want to start? I, we all, I think most of us, attended the new educator and health professional luncheon last Wednesday. It's exciting to just see the progress that goes on in the county, throughout the county. Yesterday, I went to the chamber board meeting, just a lot of updates on Legacy Square and it opening soon, the different things that are going on, laying of the bricks. And then, for people who would like to make sure that the commissioners are staying on top of the departments, I can let you know that both the 911 operator department and the responders are doing a great job.
Went to the Gillette House dedication. Gillette's donated the house to Ottawa University for a women's dormitory, and it's a really beautiful house here on Cedar Street, and that's all I've done.
Attended the meeting Iain just talked about. After the report beyond what she said?
Apologize, I didn't make the Lane City meeting the other night. I was attending the Southwest State RC&amp;D Conference. I did notify the mayor down there that I wouldn't be there, so at least the sheriff helped me out, get a little information of what pertained. I did go to Wellsville Chamber Commerce meeting yesterday. They made announcements that they had raised $9,000 in a golf tournament they just put on, and a big chunk of that money goes to help support Wellsville Days Celebration in September, and they also was approached by the Kime Trucking up there, I mean, approached, they didn't go to them, Kime come to them, and wants to be a big sponsor in Wellsville Days this year. All their facilities up there are coming along real quick, good, they're already putting the roof on the convenience center, and the other two buildings are still being laid up with block. Another thing they announced, that they had got $15,000 for the, to walking trails there in Wellsville through the parks and recreations, and they made the announcement, it was through our health department grant that Ned was talking about, that we was going to get another $100,000, and they did get, I know the city up there got $40,000 for sidewalks under the first phase, and I'm not sure where this money's coming from, that one or the next one, but I know the Parks and Recs up there got $15,000, they're putting in a walking trail around the city park and the ball fields and so forth, so. They are, we voted yesterday to put in a new website, I didn't catch the gentleman's name, he's from here in Ottawa, and a young gentleman, and they do the Ottawa Chamber Commerce website, and I think, so we voted to change our website and go with them up there. Oh, I think something, you know, the unusual job our public works is having to do, and I seen one really strange. They had. And I seen one really strange they had to do. But it, all the years I've lived, I've never seen such a thing. Down there, if you go from Rantoul out to the River Bridge, we had our big track hole out there trying to clean the ditches out through there. There was cornstalks and mud six foot deep. Ditches are six foot deep full of cornstalks and mud for a half a mile. And of course, no water in the world could ever flow down the ditch, you know, through all that. So, I don't know how long they was out there, but I know they was out there most of the day with a big track hole and our dump truck hauling off cornstalks and mud. And then them ditches through there are probably six to eight foot deep in some places along there, so. And it was up level with the road in a lot of those places, so. We're getting, I know we're getting tagged, and so is every other county, doing some jobs that they just never had to do before, you know, and responsibility trying to. Instead of just doing the regular old maintenance, they're stuck without there doing some oddball jobs that we'd never been faced with before, so. Just appreciate what they're doing, and I know we got a lot of problems out there, but hopefully, we can, and eventually, we'll get around them, so. Get rid of all this other stuff.
I also attended the luncheon that Ian and Colton talked about, and yesterday, I attend an executive board FCDC meeting. We're still in the process of looking for the director, that's what this meeting was about. We will be having another one next Tuesday morning. We're trying to work through this and get that position filled as soon as we can. But I want to make sure we do due diligence and get the right person for that, so. We'll continue to meet on that until we get to where we want to be. Right now, we show a study session for next Monday. We have a commission meeting on the twenty-first. I see we also have a joint luncheon the twenty-first, which will be at the city. That's the only thing I have right now.
This is not a report, that is kind of a quest. I know Colt was there and Ian was there the other night during the planning zoning and a lot of the issues on the solar energy and wind generation. And they brought in a specialist in that to do a lot of commentary. And then our public, our building inspector gives us a lot of good information, too. But I agree with Ian, there's a lot of it I didn't catch. And with her back to us and all, and kind of conversation up there, people be like, it'd be nice if we could get the same minutes from that meeting that the board, the planning board. I wouldn't mind reviewing the minutes from that meeting just to kind of get in my head, to put all the two and twos together that there was the conversation. It was Larry run a excellent meeting, and he did the best he could do, bringing in an expert to, to, you know, fill us in and help the board make a decision of moving forward. The board had a lot of good questions, and I'm sure they got a lot more before it's all over with, so. That's only an odd quest, maybe. We just get the same minutes. I don't think, they're probably not online yet because they're not approved minutes. So, but they'll get a set of minutes to approve at their next meeting. Be nice if we could see those minutes, the commissioners, too, especially if you weren't here, kind of to fill in the people even that weren't here. They use a lot of acronyms, and the gentleman did a ton of acronyms, and ain't no way you could think and look fast enough to look up all the acronyms and places he were saying that you could go get your information from. And also, I kind of would mention, I went to, while I was at the Southwest State, they had a gentleman there from Oklahoma Power. And he actually was giving a presentation on wind generator and systems in the state of Oklahoma, so I was able to ask him a lot of questions about it and establish. Twenty-two percent of their electricity comes from wind generators, and it's all controlled by the power company, so. It would be nice to get those minutes, so we could kind of sit down and look it over and have a better idea about the whole conversation.
Because you're looking, see if you can get those and email them to us.
Thank you.
First meeting was just informational, there'll be more meetings on the, on it, for the public comment, but this one was just purely for information. Had some presenters.
Anything else? I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
For adjourn.